This is the Albernette City Council for Thursday, September 20th, or September 12th, I'm sorry, 2019 at 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and get started. I'll call the meeting to order. Here in the city of Albernette, we do do the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll go ahead and do that at this time. We have our 9/11 memorial up there right now, but I think he's going to change it to our flag. For the folks that have not been here before, you'll see that we do have our state and our national flag behind us, but we usually give ours to our flag here. Let me give them a moment to change it. If not, we can certainly do the one behind us. I can use that. We can make that work in the meantime. So, I'll go ahead and stand up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you for attending this evening. I need you to go ahead and get a roll call to establish a forum to do business tonight. I asked the city clerk to take care of that, please.
Counselor Benson.
Right.
Counselor Saris here. Counselor Shaw.
Right.
Counselor Trump.
Thank you. I would note that we are short one council member that was notified us in advance. He would just be a few minutes late, so he'll be here shortly. But we'll go ahead and proceed since we've established a forum. We'll go ahead and ask for approval of the agenda as submitted. Well, you know what? Stand by on that. We're going to go ahead and recognize Deputy Norman, correct?
Yep.
I need to move him to the top of the list so he can get back out and do his regular duties protecting us this evening. So, we'll go ahead and recognize you at this time.
Thank you. For the required 43 hours of required downtime, we did 7:00 to 20:00, 20:00 calls for service.
As always, we appreciate you giving us more hours than we're contracted for. Everybody recognizes that you do a good job for us. I know that we're back in session with school and we, across the board, everyone likes our school resource officer and the job that she does for us. So, any questions from council on the sheriff's report or any of the calls for service or clarifications? Okay. Then I'll go ahead and thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
All right. So, the sheriff's report is complete. We'll go on with the regular agenda and move on to item number four, which is the approval of the agenda. I asked the city clerk if there's been any edits or modifications to the...
No, not yet.
Okay. That didn't get on the tape. We didn't really start it for nothing. Okay. I'm sorry. I was too busy jumping there. Is there any modifications or changes to the agenda as submitted? Okay. Then we'll move on past number five, which was the sheriff's report, on to the mayor's report. I normally have a...
We have approval of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The shaking of the walls threw me off there a little bit. We have an approval of the agenda as submitted by Councilman Shaw.
Second.
Second by Councilman Saris. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries on. I apologize. All right. We'll move on to the mayor's report. All right. I normally have a few things to say here and there about different things. Tonight, I'm going to go ahead and go past some of those things. I just wanted to recognize September 11th for my mayor's report this evening. I just made a couple of quick notes so I could get it right for what I wanted to say. You'll see, we put our 9/11 memorial pickup there, and I'm just going to read this so I make sure I get it right. It said, "9/11," or "September 11th," has been memorialized as a national day of service and remembrance. Service events to honor the 18th anniversary took place in communities across the country, and millions of our fellow Americans remembered and honored the victims, families, responders of 9/11/01. Today's young people have grown up with the social networks that weren't even invented in 2001. Facebook didn't start until 2004. Twitter didn't launch until 2006. It's important that we, as city leaders, you as parents, teachers, and everyone as Americans help remember and teach this sad and important part of our nation's history. So, just as a reminder, on September 11th, 2001, 2,997 civilians were killed, 343 firefighters, 60 police officers, and eight EMT and paramedics. So, I just wanted to make sure that we, as city leaders, never forget our nation's history. There's 18 years, I mean, almost a generation has passed from the time that occurred, and I want to make sure that we're moving with those folks. Okay. That is my mayor's report tonight. We'll go ahead and move on with council reports. I will start from the left this evening. Councilman Vincent.
Oh, nothing for me.
That's easy enough. Counselman Saris.
Nothing.
Counselman Shaw. Counselman...
Nothing.
All right. With no council reports, then we'll move on to the citizen comments. For the folks in the audience, this is the time and place we do citizen comments. There are two types here in the city of Albernette. One is for agenda items. If you wish to speak with anything that is an agenda item or listed on your agenda this evening, you'll have up to five minutes to do so. Just state your name and address clearly for the record, and you can go ahead and make your comments to the council at this time. Seeing none, then we'll move on to non-agenda items. Same thing, you'll have up to five minutes to do so for any items that aren't on the agenda, but you still wish to speak to the council about. Okay. Having no non-agenda items, we'll move on to our written reports. The first one is the fire department. Counsel, the fire department's report is in your packets. You'll see a notation on your report this evening that Cam Ford is the chief until further notice because of an injury for our existing fire chief, Steve Graham. So, I will turn over the report to the fire department if they have any further comments or items that they wish to add to the report.
Um, well, the only thing is, is Steve will be out for six to 10 weeks, roughly. He had neck surgery yesterday to fix something, so he's home, he's good. Be six to 10 weeks before he's back. He's full guts chief. Nothing else, really. Everything's fixed. We talked about the breaks, Guy and I did already, so other than that, we don't have any issues there.
Very good. Any questions, council, on the report as submitted? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and move on to...
Hey, I'd like to ask...
I would like to wish the chief well. Anything we can do about this, no?
And then, do you mean that are... Is anyone planning to attend the open house next week at the fire department?
Yes, we do have... It has been put out. I know we have several people, minimum probably four or five, that will be there, including myself, hoping for a good showing.
Good. Other council questions? Sorry. All right. Very good. Then, having the fire department report done, we'll move on to public works again. The report is in your council packet. I'm sure you have an opportunity to review it. I'll turn it over to Guy if he has anything further to add to that report.
Only thing I have to add is this. It's all up and running. Oops. Oh.
For the folks on camera, they can't see that, who review us on YouTube, reviewing the cameras that are at the Public Works Department up off of...
Howard Street.
Uh-huh.
Howard.
Howard Street, sorry. Where it crosses Third there. So, this is something that we had approved at previous council meetings. This gives us an opportunity to review not only the city property there, but also for the, some of the dumping issues that we've had on that property. So, hopefully that'll keep the folks honest up there that are coming in from out of town with some of the different issues that we've had up there. This was a city installation. I'd like to note that. So, we did this very conservatively and affordable for the city of Albernette. I want to thank Guy for doing that as well. Looks like it's a... This is available not only within City Hall, this is available from your mobile device, this is available within the facility.
Yep.
So, very nicely done, and it has the capability for expansion.
Yes. Two more slots in this receiver. So, we put... And I have the cameras. It came with four cameras, just no use for them at this point unless we want to monitor different areas.
I'd like to see it towards the front of the building just to ensure our events stay safe.
Okay.
Maybe one on the tower.
What was that?
Maybe one on the tower.
These, I wound up my wired cameras because the...
No, I had it facing the tower.
Oh, facing the tower. I can do that. No problem. No problem.
Which we've got.
Yep.
And these cameras operate regardless of whether or not, like, the other day we lost power, and these will continue to operate, so no one's going to get a... These are backed up, generated, backed up, and that goes on the darkness. So, no one's going to get a mess in the darkness. And they do do night vision.
Yes. Night vision, they're set to record during motion, so they're on all the time. I can, I've got a small monitor in the shop. I can check the monitor anytime we're down there. I can check on my mobile device on my computer, but they only record when there's motion. So...
So, you're getting several weeks of backup.
Oh, yeah. Yes. I've used like 0.4% of the terabyte storage so far in four or five days. So...
Do you have a sign up?
It's coming, so it's in process. So, no. If this, at this point, if something happened, we probably couldn't use any footage we have because it's not signed, but it will be very soon. That's coming down later in the agenda, but Cory's working on, Cory Cooper's working on signs as we're speaking, so... You mentioned it. It went well. Any questions or comments about the report or about the new camera system in place?
I do, I see in your report about striking outside of town.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to assume Marion won't be hearing phone calls?
No.
Okay.
And the county, I ran into a roadblock with the county. They, it seems weird, but they said they don't have, they wouldn't have enough paint for this year. They, that they don't buy enough paint to even get all of theirs done. They buy X number of tons of paint, and that's it. He didn't think it'd be a big problem to do it for us, but the paint would be an issue. And I said, "Well, how about if I buy paint?" He had some story about they've already bought next year's paint, and so, okay, I don't usually get the state bid sheet until this fall, and so I can buy the paint. I said, "Can you do that?" And he thought he could, so that's probably our best option. I called Advance Traffic Marketing today and gave him a rough footage of the different types of lines and whatever, and he gave me a quote of $4,500 to paint our stripes. So, I think I'll be pursuing the county. I mean, I don't know what their rate for actually painting would be. I know what I can, that should only be about $300 worth of paint according to the last batch we bought. So, you know, anything under $2,000 worth of actual labor or whatever would be a win at that point, so that's where I'm at right now. I haven't found anybody else besides Diamond Vogel that paints, and I don't think Diamond Vogel touches with their, with their road crew unless they are doing a lot in this neighborhood, so...
I think maybe...
And I didn't, I did not try them. I probably shouldn't.
Just clues in your application.
No.
I don't know.
So, G Asphalt does not. Called the guy that does a lot of, I can't even remember his name now, does a lot of parking lot painting. He's kind of a more local guy, and he's not interested. He doesn't have a truck. He's like me, he's doing it all by hand, so he doesn't want to tie into it enough. I'm not saying there isn't somebody out there, but I don't think we'll get it done this fall, but I think we can be on somebody's list in the spring, no matter what. I think county's our best option at this one. Just got to pin him down on a number for doing it. Any other questions? Thank you for working in the team. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to the clerk's report. Again, it's been an opportunity, or it's in your package, but I'm not going to review anything that I had to add. My only comment is on the library contract. This is something that has come up in the past and been tracking that either in the past or in the council or even within the city. You know that the library contract makes up a significant amount of our budget, around 20%, I believe. Yeah. So, this is quite an investment, whereas we don't have a lot of people in percentage of our population that utilize the library. In my opinion, it's a cost benefit of what we're paying. The library is, the current contract that we have is a rate that is increasing phenomenally on a yearly basis, so I think we need to enter into some additional negotiation with them and what we're going to do. However, because the library's consortium between Cedar Rapids, Marion, and Hiawatha, they all deal together, and they don't give you much room to negotiate anything. Basically, they kind of have us, so I think we should entertain other options as a possibility. I'll give you an example. City of Coggin, I don't hold me to it, but I believe their population is around 650 people. City of Albernette will be around 700 in the next census. They have a fully functioning public library, which they really enjoy and their citizens enjoy, yet the city our size, which not much bigger, but bigger, is being forced to pay, in my opinion, too high of a rate that continues to increase, and we're not being given any option or latitude from the libraries in the larger cities. So, that's my comments based on your report. Any other comments or anyone else?
Building permits. Have we gotten that up and running, the system to do it better?
Um, I'm working on it, so I've been utilizing it a bit more. So, it's hard to, well, just seeing how it works and all, it fluctuates and doing that and entering that, it's what I decided.
There's no other comments on the clerk's report. We're going to move on. Number 10 is the approval of the consent agenda. We have, is there any changes to the consent agenda as submitted?
I have one other invoice amount, or invoice payment. It's the solid waste agency for, that means the trash from the fire.
Yeah. Well, it was a combination thing to me, mostly, mostly what we cleaned up behind the fire station.
So, it's for the solid waste agency, $22.80.
That's the only change?
Correct.
All right. Here, number, seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted by Saris.
Right.
Second by Vincent. Any discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries on. We'll go ahead and move on to new business. The first item is a public hearing. On the proposal to enter into a general obligation fire station loan agreement, if you move past your other priorities here, set up this. Cedar, you'll find this is the item we've been working on for the new fire station. You'll see it's submitted there. This will be a hearing with the intent to enter into the loan agreement to adopt a resolution. We'll open a public hearing here in a moment. This is a public hearing with a general obligation fire station loan agreement. As I stated, you have that in front of you. You can send your paperwork there. You pull that up, so we've got it there. So, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Has the court received, this is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Clerk, if you receive any written or oral objections to the approval for the items on this general obligation fire station loan agreement?
No.
All right. Let the record reflect that the, there were no objections entered. This is the time and place to hear any comments from the public also for this item. No, or no public comments were also heard. Since there was no written or oral objections to the public hearing and there were no public comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. You go ahead and note that, then we'll move on to the council. Counsel, do you have any questions for the items for resolution 092, 2019-02? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and continue on with approval of resolution 09, 2019-02, resolution taking action on a proposal to enter a general obligation fire station loan agreement. Are we in the motion to approve? By Saris. Second by Vincent. Any discussion on this? For the record, this proposes to enter into a loan agreement to borrow money under their principal amount, not to exceed 1.2 million for the purpose of paying the cost to the extent of undertaking the urban renewal project for the Albernette urban renewal area consisting of construction and equipment of a municipal fire station that has been established, that has been published, known as, opposed action has been held here upon on September 12, There are no more discussion. I would ask for approval by roll call.
Counselor Vincent?
Aye.
Counselor Saris, aye. Counselor Shaw?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Record reflected passionately minus Counselman Henryson. All right. That taken care of. We'll go ahead and move on to item number B, a resolution for 09, 2019-02, taking action on proposal to enter into a general obligation fire station loan agreement. What? Or did the, the loan agreement, sorry. It reads a little... Was I, did I have that wrong? Oh, that was the public hearing. I'm sorry, then the resolution. Sorry, I did a vote. C, discuss previous sidewalk e-assessment balances. All right. Let me get to those. Okay. In your packet here, you have these assessment ballot, balances worksheet. If you take a look at those, you'll see a balance worksheet there that lists the ones for the sidewalks themselves, and then you'll also see a example of a letter that went out on September 6, 2019, and on the backside of that, you'll have an invoice there. So, that's example of the letter and invoices that went out. For a brief history on this, I'll have the city clerk give an explanation of your Excel spreadsheet that you see on the right, and then I'll see how the council wants to deal with this. Go ahead.
Um, when I started, I knew that there were some sidewalk payments that needed to be tracked. I just found time to get around to reviewing them, and these were the properties that still have a balance that's due for their sidewalk assessment. I calculated, and I went back in our system and made sure that all the payments were accurate as far as the records were concerned, and I drafted the letter and the invoice, and I sent it to all of the property owners requesting that they either contact City Hall to discuss payment options, make a payment, or attend the meeting tonight. We have received one payment. The first property listed there, we've received a payment this week for that one. I have not heard from any of the other property owners. I think there is a chance that former clerk may have been sending invoices. I'm not sure. I haven't been sending invoices until now because I didn't, I hadn't taken the time to approve payments and how that was set up. So, those are the balances that remain in the properties, and you can see payment history for lack of payment history.
Should be noted that they all signed an agreement to make payments. So, it's not that it was never addressed. They signed an agreement, and they, they're not following through.
They have them on file. They're accessible now.
Yeah. So, between 2016 and 2019, you can see these payment agreements. I think they were originally set up on a five-year window.
Right.
Yeah. And so, this is an update on these particular ones as they're getting ready to be, that period is getting ready to come deal with this 2020, so, because that's the case. Is it raining?
Is it wet? It's raining out.
Okay. Good. All right. We have our, the council member showing up here. Counselman Anderson, we're at point, do you look at your general sidewalk assessments? Okay. Oh, I think so. So, we're in sidewalk assessments. You can get a, put an update there. Clerk, just give an update of where we're at on the, in your packet. You'll have a balance sheet, a letter, and a invoice that we're not to focus on there. Anyway, just for a recap to bring you up to speed, this is the, that five-year window with the invoices going back from 2016, getting ready for a sunset on the original five-year payment plans for those, for those folks coming up to 2020, so we're addressing this this evening. There's, with these addresses that are on here, there's a spattering of folks that have made one or two payments and then some folks that have made no payments. So, that's what we're going to address this evening, see what the pleasure of the council is to do something like this. And the letter, obviously, as it went out, it makes it clear that the folks that were, that this was sent to had an option to either, it looks like, contact City Hall or show up this evening to the city council if they wanted to give us an update, plead their case, whatever. So, have you had any contact with the folks that this particular letter went to?
I reached out to a couple...
You can give them by address. We don't have my...
I reached out to the two properties on Roosevelt and just asked if they had any thoughts about making payments. I haven't heard back. I heard one had said that they weren't financially prepared to make much of a payment.
Okay. Did anyone proactively reach out to you?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. So, based upon the folks that you've talked to, did anyone give any indication that they intend to pay these?
We just had the one payment on that first property, but no, no other indication that any payments are being made.
Well, I would like to note for the folks again that watch us on the video that it clearly states in here that, let me get to the point where I, that they... Let me get to the right part. Oh, it was the one, it's in bold, right till I get to the very end. Please note that any unpaid balance remaining may be assessed to your property taxes if we don't hear from you. So, I think the city's given the folks every opportunity to be able to, to deal with this particular issue and to take care of it. So, anyway, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to council for their comments on this and see what direction they want to take in the assessment of these funds due to the city.
You had a five-year agreement, the four-year been delayed. Do we have one year that they make their decision?
It varies a little bit because a couple of these were done on different, you know, but yeah, roughly. Yeah.
If this was assessed to their taxes, would it be the entire amount due? Can we do that now or would we, whatever balance we owe, they want to just go?
I mean, we discussed that, and, and I don't think it would be, I mean, we've been pretty nice already, but we could, we definitely could just assess what's due up to this point with another year to go, you know? That would not be the end of the world. I mean, an interest-free five-year loan on these projects was pretty kind in the first place, and so I wouldn't, I guess that's up to you, but I can't see the point of stretching it out any longer. I think we'll wind up with the same result personally. That's up to you.
I agree with you. The four years end of this, you can't, you can't go on the entire amount now. I don't think so.
I think you can take a poll rated and assess it.
I think myself sent a letter explaining to them, and without your problem, that's what could happen. Put her poll rated out on their taxes.
Those could have to give them that option at this point, the five years is a problem. That's where I'm, I mean, I agree. I'd have to probably be in the same role next year. But assessing to their taxes and their timeframe is enough. Are they supposed to, do they have a contract? They're supposed to make certain payments issue.
They signed agree, they all signed agreements and set up a payment plan.
But doesn't say a payment plan?
Yeah.
I think we should hold the contracts that they signed because I didn't read those.
That would be, that would be my concern for assessing if your taxes would happen. Their five years is a problem. And again, I don't know what their payment plan was. If we're holding onto that payment plan, then we certainly haven't known that. plan, then we certainly haven't known that.
No one had more than five years to pay it, it was set up, so it would be paid up at the end of five years. So yeah, I agree, I see what you mean.
Sure, that's gonna be due in five years, and it looks like another one that has two years, and the other one that has three, you know?
Yeah.
What looks up here, so, I don't know how you assess that, if they have it, if they have that.
It's overdue, I mean, again, if they're on a plan, and you assess what's past due, I also think it's reasonable to get more than six days' notice for that. You know, we post invoices, we, we, we can be, we can be, we can, you know? See if we can review those contracts, maybe do another follow-up letter, get specific with, I mean, it's, it's a short list, there's four, five on here, get specific on what's past due and what will be assessed, and then they'll be responsible to make these payments over the coming, you know, year or two, and when they draw it out.
Do you just wanna get a view of those contracts at council meetings before we
These, uh, as you recall, these, uh, I was here too, but I don't remember, uh, were they set up on monthly payments?
Yeah, most of them, um, yeah. It was, uh, maybe that, I, I have to, again, I have to see the agreement, but it was X number of dollars a year, whether they actually spelled out so much a month, or if they just knew that they had to, say, pay eight hundred dollars in a year, so then they, um, some of them just would add on that money to their water bill every month, and in one case, it happened four times, and then it stopped, you know?
Looking at this, some of these are like thirty, forty months overdue.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a couple that told us right from the get-go that, "I, I can't afford to pay this," but yet they signed the agreement that they would.
To get the work done.
Right, to, yeah, so, um...
As I recall, the agreement I signed was a yearly payment.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was their choice if they wanted to break it down into monthly or whatever, but yes, this is how much a year is gonna take.
So you get the choice of annual or monthly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll find them, we'll take a look at them. But I agree, now that you mention that, their time isn't up yet, so the most we could possibly do is what's due today.
Right, if they haven't already, whether they're just paying this much per year, or whatever, I, I can understand that, but that's the...
But if they come in to talk with us, maybe we can set something up where they can rearrange their payment to make it work for them too, so that'd be fine.
Yeah, the intent of the notice on the letter about the property taxes was to initiate them to wanna get in touch with us, and, but it's not on there.
That's why I thought it did, I mean, there was no proactive effort to try to get them a little bit. Uh, uh, don't get me wrong, I'm not against giving the additional time or trying to work with folks, that's not my intent, but kicking the can down the road for another year, and there's still no payments or nothing done, it's, it's a precedence that if the city's gonna go into another road project or do a sidewalk project, and trust me, Auburnett needs sidewalks, especially down there south and west portions of town, and we try to enter into an agreement with folks to say, "Hey, we'll do an effort through a grant, or we'll do something with city funds if we have available later to do a sidewalk project." It opens us up to, "Why would I pay for it?" when, or else like whatever you want, because you're never gonna collect anything from the, "You guys build the sidewalks, I'm not paying for nothing." Or to the folks that did pay, and then paid, paid, not paid, not paid, 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 not paid, why would you pay for anything? That's my only concern. Okay, so it sounds like the, um, will of the council here is no action at this point, and we want to, if I heard it right, we wanna contact them after review of the contract, give them a more chance to... And notify them again until up until a point that their five-year moving window is up before any action's taken.
Well, it tells me what's overdue now.
I'm going to ask the crew, wait, go, see what they're behind at this point, know from their agreement, and then start working on that.
Okay. Are you good on that?
Do you wanna discuss the next council meeting?
Alright. Okay, leave it as an agenda item. Alright, very good, thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Alright, then we'll go ahead and move on to item number, uh, 11D, which is Consideration Ordinance 2019-3, an ordinance limiting the Auburnett Municipal City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3, related to the city ordinance. I don't, do we have a picture of that easily to pull up? Um, if not, that's fine, it's also in your packet, black and white, but it gets on there, we'll take a look at it. If you will take a look in your packet, you'll see that Chapter 3 is also in there. Uh, Chapter 3 is very short, it has the seal of the city, it has the city motto, and then under 1-3-3, it has the city logo, it simply says, "The official city logo of Auburnett Shelby," and it has our older one that's up, or our current one that's up there, let me see that, let's see older, 'cause I think you may have it, brook here. And then there's a black and white picture, both in contrast for you in your, in your packets. Uh, this is an item that we've talked about here for several months, uh, looked at several different iterations with several different, uh, council meetings, it's been distributed throughout the city with, uh, social media, I think it was on the website too, wasn't it? Yeah, so we've had a lot of opportunity with the folks to do this. Uh, this was also an item that we had asked to be put on the newsletter, and it not only went to, uh, the folks within corporate city limits, but also I believe everybody in 52202. It was, it was in the newsletter? Yeah, so I think there's been a lot of opportunity for, uh, folks to review this. Tonight, uh, you'll have a, uh, you'll have an ordinance here for 2019-3, uh, to be able to read this, it'll be the first reading of 2019-3, but you'll have the option, uh, if you, um, after we take care of the first reading, to do a second, uh, and waive the third and final reading, if you wanna go ahead and implement this this evening, uh, as well. Just, I know I mentioned that because of the amount of coverage that we've had on this particular logo, so...
I can dig deeper and get it, but it's on the...
Sure, I, I just wanted folks to be able to see it there in color, you can see that we've been using it, uh, in a temporary form, uh, for the couple months that we've, um, had it in place for folks to be able to see. Uh, it's important that this get either approved or denied, uh, for now, because we're gonna move on later in the agenda with some associated costs to be able to deal with this, so, uh, I'll be open for any preliminary discussion on this right now before we seek any, uh, further action.
You gotten any feedback? I think it's a clean design, it's well done, more modern than what we have, I appreciate the work that's been done.
Other comments or concerns from council? I'll open it up to the audience, uh, that's here with us this evening, if they have any questions, comments, or concerns. You can nod if you like it. Okay, very good.
No, I, I like it, it, it does bring it more modern, I mean, uh, I know as round we got the first one, it took a lot of time and stuff, and I, I appreciate that, trying to bring this, keep bringing this forward, so, yeah.
Very good. Well, I can say, I will get it in the vote too, but I think council does like it, you know, I mean, it'll obviously be reflected in the vote here in a minute. Uh, okay, and then for the record, uh, we get it for free.
Yes. Yes, Kylie, did say it was in...
We appreciate, uh, well, uh, I'm sure we'll, we can recognize our artist for this, uh, a little bit later, but certainly, uh, it's going to be...
Thank God you did.
Yeah, yeah.
Does she wanna have a signature?
Yeah.
Copyright.
No, she's good, but she's going to school to be an interior designer, so you all need to be calling her up when it's time to, you know, design your new house or whatever, and throw us some business, right?
My judgment, you.
I'm sure it's a good captain. Alright, so, uh, then, that being the case, we'll go ahead, uh, your ordinance is in your packet, it's ordinance 2019-3, this is the first reading for this, uh, ordinance, so I would, uh, seek a motion to, uh, move forward with the first reading of ordinance 2019-3 for the, and ordinance limiting the Auburnett Municipal Code, Chapter 3, Section 3, relating to the city logo. Move by Vincent, sorry, second by Trump, is there any further discussion on this? Okay, then hearing none, I would ask the clerk to call the roll call on this.
Counselor Vincent.
Aye.
Counselor Sarason. Aye. Counselor Sean. Counselor Trump.
Aye.
Counselor Erickson.
Would you let the record reflect that it passed unanimously? Alright, so that takes care of that, if the council wishes to waive the second and final readings, we'll need a, uh, a, a motion second to do, do that as well for ordinance 2019-3, otherwise, then we'll move on to a second and then a final reading, if that's the desire of the council. We also need a, uh, you can discuss it preliminarily too, but I would also need a, uh, motion second to do that as well.
Who, if we waive the second and third readings of the ordinance?
There's a, there's a motion by Sarason and a second by Trump to waive the second, third, or final readings of, uh, ordinance 2019-3, which events Chapter 3, Section 3 of the city code for the city logo. Um, that, that being said, um, if it passes here in a moment, that would make the effective portion of this, the ordinance would be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication is provided by law. Just wanna make sure that we have a note of that, so we can put it in place relatively quickly. Any discussion on that? That also requires a roll call though, you would call that clerk.
Counselor Erickson.
Aye.
Counselor Sean.
Aye.
Counselor Sean. Counselor Sarason. Aye. Counselor...
Alright. With the record reflected, it was passed unanimously, the city of Auburnett now has a new logo, uh, we'll need to get that replaced within the ordinances and reprinted. Alright, very good, and would you, uh, just make a notation of the updated that for next? I could do it in my mayor's report, but I just wanna make sure that's in place. Good, that'll bring us up to the next item on here. Brings us up to item E, which is an ordinance review for Chapter 46 Animals, okay? This doesn't necessarily require any action, in fact, it probably won't. Uh, what I do wanna say about this is the animal ordinance review is in your packet here, Chapter 46 and Chapter 47. Chapter 46 is, uh, animals, which is, of course, available to anybody online, and then Chapter 47. Uh, we've had some, uh, uh, call for service, uh, within the last thirty days or so, which, uh, called upon Chapter 46 and specifically 47 as to whether or not we had vicious animals, uh, based upon the particular breed within the city of Auburnett. Uh, in reviewing that, we determined that, uh, perhaps this ordinance was, uh, time, it was time for this ordinance to be updated, not only because of the breed being falling under a vicious animal, but because of other issues that have been coming up and related to animals. And by updating this ordinance, it would expand some of the options we have to possibly increase, uh, the detail and length of the ordinance. I'm going to pass around, uh, a, uh, newer version of what we could possibly do for our animal control. This newer version would be, uh, a combination, it'd still be Chapter 46, but we'd be a combination of 46 and 47, and also the 28 agreement between ourselves and Cedar Valley Humane Society. You can take a look at that as you get in on, or get a chance to do that, I'm not asking for any action tonight, I just wanted you to be aware of it. So, uh, I'm gonna open this up to comments in a minute, uh, to the, uh, council as well as to Public Works and the city clerk, as you all deal with this particular issue, I'll start with, um, the city clerk. Public Works, I don't know how often you're dealing with animal problems, but I know this has come up in the last month or so.
Occasionally, it, it's hard, it's, it's gonna be really hard to find language that works for every situation, but I think what we have is outdated, for sure. Um, it was based off of things that were happening many years ago, and it, it needs to be brought up to me.
Counselor Erickson.
Just by reading complaints on social media, lots of tolerance complaints, uh, there's definitely a dog issue, I can say dog and cat issues, um, as far as folks not keeping animals contained to their property. Cats, yeah, I'm super concerned about cats as far as attacking, but there are some rather large dogs from town that run free, and, um, as far as the pit bull, I have seen a pit bull in this town, on a leash, walking right down the street. They don't know, they don't know where to go with it, they honestly, they don't know enough about dogs, about breeds.
And you brought your point, so, um, I'm gonna jump in, I strongly disagree with any grain of specific language, so I appreciate that we're looking at this and excluding that, and I think you can define vicious without pulling out the bloodline. Um, and on the same note, you know, there are animals in town that could visually be identified as pit bulls, I'm not gonna remove that animal from someone's house, it's not proven to me that it's a threat anymore, so, um, if it's not something that would enforce, then it needs to be updated, and then of course, language is a threat.
I think it should be updated, and I agree with, we're only business, I mean, you can have a vicious colony, just so these things can't affect them, and so I think I agree, we should not have breeding enters, cause, um, ours has got, I don't know if I have a cat, neighbor cat that brings me cats, or touches, it's, it's, but it's out of your place.
And, and that is addressed in the, the new ordinance about, that not only stray animals, or owners that allow animals to either cross or temporarily go into other yards and things like that, that the particular language that, uh, I always see councilman, but I, when I see the, you know, I mean, council person, Counselor Sarason referring to, it, it specifically states, uh, pit bull terrier, American pit bull terrier, pit bull, Staffordshire bull terrier, American Staffordshire terrier, rottweiler, or any dog of mixed breeding falls under the category of vicious dogs. And the problem is, when you get thrown into the category of vicious dog or vicious animal, the dog is subject to being removed and destroyed. And, uh, I can tell you, I personally talked to a dog owner here in Auburnett, who has a dog that will fall into this category, that is a certified servicing dog, and the dog is harmless. Uh, I don't think there's anyone here that wants to remove that dog and destroy it, and that means that we hit a, uh, a point with our ordinances that we either need to enforce them, or we need to change them, and in this particular case, I think a change is important, and I'm sorry, Counselor Trump.
No, I think it's, need to work at the change, and I think that may still be, with the, the pit bulls.
That's very, I agree, I agree, at least, American Staffordshire was a kid, and they're the sweetest dogs ever, and I know that we're, about that, but, the language in this, at the very least says, it says any dog of mixed breeding, general, under needle. I think what they probably meant is what says down here, includes any dog, any of the four mentioned breeds of mixed breeds, but they're not, but it says, it doesn't say that, so literally anybody down there that's mixed breed dog, should have the dog destroyed, and that, even for that alone, even if you wanna keep the pit bull language in there, it's wrong, so, absolutely has to be...
Yeah, I think, I think maybe at that time, so, um, anyway, I, I wanna discuss it a little bit this evening, upon review, we're gonna get this information out to all the council folks, I, I mentioned it in a public forum, it is a ministerial act, but however, uh, I just wanna make sure we talked about it in the public forum first, so we can get it out to you, and we can review it in that email forum, uh, so we met some of that public reference criteria.
I, I would also like to address, like, the stray cat situation, I don't know how, I don't know how we put wording in there of, you know, there are people around town that feed stray cats, and then the cat runs away, and causes issues, goes through my trash, et cetera. Yeah, I haven't seen.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's in here now, specifically because, uh, that does, that does address that, not only with the stray animals, but it also addresses animals that are in heat, that, uh, they have to be, you can have your animal, but if, uh, if it's stray, if it's not on your property, um, leash, especially in, uh, I think, uh, especially in parks and things like that, or if they're in heat, you gotta keep them indoors during that time and things like that, so, um, highly updated, it, it literally goes from about nine, uh, different, um, nine different ordinance pieces to twenty-four. So I tried to incorporate some of the things that we're seeing, or, or we've tried to incorporate some of the things that we've seen going on, uh, that we've got complaints on in the last, you know, six, eight, uh, twelve months over the city, so, obviously, and this is, a lot of this information is taken from cities in Iowa, and it references, like we try to do in all our shows, the state law, so I don't think we're gonna have any issue with any of this, it's what everybody else is doing, I think we just need to come up to, uh, come up to speed with some of the stuff that we're doing in the city.
And you said this was sent?
To everybody via email for review, once the council's done with it, uh, and our full-time staff, then we'll... Once the council is done with it and our full-time staff, then we'll send it on to legal for approval, if that's something we want to do, but just didn't want to put any more time or effort into it until everybody was on board with it. We are, and so the folks know too, I think we've mentioned this before, we are looking to do a complete code review in the next two years, but some of these things just can't wait when something comes up. Any other discussion on that? Okay, very good. All right, then we're going to go ahead and move on, I believe it's the, okay, it is New System, Ordinance Review 46 is completed, F, New System Abatement Process and Updates.
We had one property that was scheduled to be cleaned up by today. This is actually the starting photo from earlier this summer.
Whose property?
It's the Sanders.
Two twenty-nine, two twenty-nine North Main?
Two twenty-nine North Main.
Is that the right address? Sorry.
And this is where, I'll get there, I hope. This is a picture taken this afternoon, basically the same shot of where it's at today. Focus here in a second. Lot of cars removed, a lot of items removed, but still a long ways to go. I spoke with the property owner today and he's had issue with his family, with medical issues and et cetera, but you guys did vote to abate if it wasn't cleaned up by today. So that's where we're at. Most of the other abatement properties that we've dealt with are done, with the exception of one other one that's still in process. There's a few more properties that need to have a first time letter that we will send out. Nothing major, but this is the one that's due up today and we need to decide what to do.
I apologize, it's two thirty-nine.
Two thirty-nine North Main.
Let me see, I did handle some of the abatement hearings, I wasn't present in all of them for those folks on the council that weren't present for the abatement hearings. Obviously, we didn't do them with a quorum because they were handled outside regular council meetings. And for this particular case, the, we refer to them as property owners, because we're in a public meeting and we're also recorded for YouTube, so although the property owner, if present, is welcome to discuss anything they wish to about the property or to make any case for the condition of the property or ask for any extensions or justify their particular property for the abatement purpose. Also, the city, as a general rule, I see general rule because of emergency situations and circumstances, but the city generally, for the folks that see us out there, has two options when it comes to things with abatement. We can abate it, meaning we can remove the violations as a city entity and then bill back to the owner for what was taken care of, or we can put on municipal infractions, which in fact can go into the court system and then the number of things that can happen, from fines to tax assessments to a judge ordering the items to be done, which can wind up the property or you can tip the court and things like that. So like Guy said, in this particular case, the abatement portion of it was handled by, or was done with the abatement folks, or the folks present at the hearing calling for abatement and that time is up as of?
Two days.
Today.
What was the original meeting on this, any extension?
Two eighteen.
Two eighteen.
This was the largest amount of time we gave to any property owner, mostly because of the sheer amount of things that needed to be moved, so.
I think because the owner told us so much about it.
And one other property had been cleaned up, the property owner cleaned up the next door property completely too, so just give it a little more time to work on this.
If I remember from the meetings, was there a record of this type of paper on this property? It's been decor, et cetera.
Well, that seems like that's my problem.
You'll, for public comment, you're welcome to make comments on this, just take your name and address, play with for the record before addressing the council, please.
Oh, sorry, Keith Swell.
Okay, yes, Mr. Swell, and this is your, this is your property, you've identified yourself, or you, go ahead and speak if you wish to.
Well, it's kind of circumstances beyond my control, but some of the laws want to help me clean up the other two properties.
And we appreciate that.
And I didn't have access to either one of the trailers, so I guess I just asked for the extension.
I didn't, I wasn't at your particular hearing when the information was put out. I was at one of your hearings, not this particular hearing. I know at the hearing that I was at, we did go and red-tag the particular violations, and I think I actually was at, we came up to your house and the ones that we did there.
Yeah, you did both houses.
Yeah, and those look good, you know, and we appreciate that.
Well, basically, these are all on wheels, so you know, there's not a whole lot of other stuff. I've been working on it.
Okay. Needs a lot more work, so when you say you're asking for an extension, what does that mean? Does that mean two days, or does that mean a week? Does that mean later's coming?
The rest of the month would probably be nice.
Ultimately, that's going to be a decision of the council today. I'm of the opinion, you probably don't deserve an extension because of the amount of time that you've had, and I personally haven't seen anyone working on this property. Can you bring up the picture, the original picture so we can do a comparison?
Yeah.
These little ones, this is stuff that I picked up that I sort now.
This portable shed, did you not move that to the front of the building? Is that right?
Yeah.
And then, I do have a picture of the front from today, but that's matching the picture basically taken from roughly the same spot, so that was in June, I think that was the picture ahead of the hearing that was taken from the back site.
And then go back to the one from today, please. So the portable shed has been moved, it looks like the tires maybe?
Yeah, yeah, we've hauled up those out there, and then the trailer didn't, wasn't available for any more movement, so I moved what I could.
That vehicle doesn't, doesn't look like it drives and it doesn't look like it's registered. Is there registration or insurance information on that vehicle, sir?
No.
That's a violation, you're aware of that, right?
There's probably a total of three, the large, that's a pickup that has the steel piled up high, that's actually a pickup that has a rack on it on the back, so that's, I think, why Keith's referring to, things are on wheels, because there's a trailer in there and a pickup that has stuff on it and, yeah.
But it's still there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying, that's, what he's pointing out is that if he could get it loaded up and moved out of there, it's not like it's all just laying on the ground. That's the point I'm making.
And I do want to verify that, his personal situation.
Keith was relating to me that his wife has been having some ailments.
Yep, and I've heard from other sources as well, so I feel for that. I've had a sick family member and that does take a lot of time, so I would like to recognize that he's made progress, he's maintained the other two properties as well. They just stay clean, so.
This one's a little harder to see, but that portable building is right here behind this branch. It moved in this storage container to put some of the small items in.
Yeah.
And, there's a lot of them in between the storage building and the container.
Well, those are gone, I mean, most of them gone.
The mowers, oh.
Yep, yep, I put everything in the, the.
So.
You indicated the end of the month, that's 17 days, you think you can get that cleanup effort done in 17 days?
Well, you should try, yeah.
I'm of the opinion that we do it for you and do you for it, however, that's going to be a decision of the council. If the council chooses to give you the extension of the 17 days, it would be my opinion that if that occurs, that we red-tag it again, document it again, and then that you provide, I suppose daily is not necessary, but certainly weekly, meaning on no later than noon on every Friday, you give an update to the city as to what the progress is so that we can document it again. And by document, I assume that you have no problem with us entering the property to be able to refotograph it?
No.
I don't have a problem stopping down there and talking to you each Friday and looking at the progress, yeah, I think, last time I volunteered to come help you.
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't have an issue with that. I just want to get these abatement hearings completed and we are very close to being done, so this is one of those particular cases. All right, I do have another question for you, but it doesn't relate to this particular abatement piece. Is there a pleasure of the council here on this property?
I would make a motion that be extended through October 1st, with this being the final extension that will be ordered to this property.
Have a motion by Saracen for an extension of this property for October 1st, we have a second by Councilman Shawn, is there any further discussion on this? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, the motion carries. You haven't talked over 1st to complete that, is there any problem with council with the stipulation that I stated earlier, that you'll need to cooperate with us on a weekly basis that we'll re-red-tag it and photograph it on a weekly basis? All right, very good. I have one other question for you since you're here and you don't have to answer if you don't want to, okay? Another property that's close to there, I don't know the address, it's not an occupied structure.
Oh, it's two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five on Main there. We had an opportunity to speak about this a few months ago when I met with you or you came in for a separate hearing. You indicated that you were going to try to occupy that structure at some time. That structure has not had anyone in it for some time, years, and it hasn't had any utilities hooked to it. I told you at that time that if you failed to occupy that structure or rehook utilities to it or maintain it, the city would finally take action on that and its abandoned structure. You indicated to us at that time that you might be occupying that structure. Can you give us an update as to where you're at with that property?
Well, I'm not going to occupy it, but.
What is your intent with it?
I can get started on it, once I get all this other stuff, I know.
Okay. Just know, I understand you're busy with this particular piece property right here, but that takes you up through October 1.
Okay.
You can't keep a building in corporate city limits, especially of residents like that, without utilities hooked to it or no one living to it. It finally gets into a dilapidated structure like this, it's not new information, we talked about it before.
Okay.
Okay, I just want you to make it aware of that because the city is going to contact you again and say, we're taking action on an abandoned structure within the, within the city, because it's going to get into a condition that's unsafe if it's not already there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, fair enough. I'll keep in touch with the overload, the situation, I just, the only hard feelings when we finally take action against that property as well.
We're all neighbors, you know.
Okay, fair enough. Also, thank you for attending tonight, we appreciate it.
All right.
Any questions for myself or anyone on council? Now's the time to discuss it.
Okay.
All right, very good. All right, that takes care of the item for the new abatement update. We'll go ahead and move on to Resolution 092019 to 01 FY19 Street Parking Financial Report. This is an annual report, I believe, that we're required to have, I'll turn it over to the city clerk, she can brief us on that, you have your information in your packet.
Yes, this is an annual report that's survived by the state through the Iowa Department of Transportation. We get road use tax on an annual basis, and we report how we utilize that funding, that funding for street improvements, new projects, and we also just explain our other financial expenditures regarding the road maintenance and road repair. I did not, I had assistance with this the first time around, because I just started, and then I had assistance this year as well, making sure that our numbers were in line. Basically, pulled our budget from FY19 and looked at the expenditures relating to the roadway maintenance expenses and plugged those in, and that makes it that.
The report's in your packet, you have a finalized sheet there at the end of the chapter, beginning in, any balances there?
Yeah.
All right, you've had a, this was sent out to you in advance, you've had an opportunity to review it. Any questions for the clerk or for the public works on this? The ordinance number is referenced at the beginning of the report on the bottom top, a three quarters of a way down on the page.
Yeah.
I don't think there's an actual order, I think we just, it's a simple approval, right?
This is a resolution, the cover page is the.
Resolution number right there with the signatures below it on the report.
It's nice and big and bold. Just as another note, I put together a spreadsheet to try to help me understand the report, so I include that if you have some time to look that over.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a great.
On the explanation sheet, there is a comment about things that were in the report, it's not going to get red flagged here a week.
No, I actually called the lady who works at Iowa, Iowa Department of Transportation who facilitates this report, and she's been ready to change the entire report, but she doesn't like how it's being, how it's structured right now. And I went through all of this with her to make sure that I was understanding it and I had no questions, and she said that those were a bad explanation, and she was okay.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, so me and annual report can be done with a simple vote, but I'm going to defer back to you Danielle, do we need this by real call or by vote? Okay, all right. This is another question, I entertain a motion to go ahead and approve the resolution. All right, now I got to go look it up, so.
FY19.
All right, there we go.
Someone's.
All right, moved by Saracen, second by Trump, any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, the motion carries and will want it on the page. I know we're going long this evening, so I'll try to get through this. Request from Lynn Koop for street markings, no parking sign recognized.
Koop, after the overlay, thought it would be nice to have rural type center line and side markings on North Street. I'm not in favor, it hasn't ever had markings to my knowledge, and it's in, well within city limits, I don't, I'm not exactly sure of the motivation behind that. The conversation started with the request for no parking sign, the resident that lives on the corner, on the northeast intersection of Main Avenue and North Street, has some people coming over to assist his wife while he's at work at night, and they have been parking on the street. There are no, no parking signs there, and rather than parking in the driveway, and he's got plenty of driveway space, and I just haven't been able to catch him at home to ask him if they could, but for semis rounding the corner, going north on Main, trying to turn onto North Street, if those cars are parked there near that stop sign, they have a heck of a time making the corner, so we definitely need to do something. I don't know if planting a no parking sign is the solution. I sure can, I want your input on it before I stick one in there, just continue to try and get a hold of Mr. Arnoldman or the property owner and ask him to have those people, it's never been an issue before until he started that service, so I think it can be handled with a simple communication.
I do have a question, what does our ordinance say about just planting a no parking sign? I mean, I work for Mary and obviously, there's a whole cost to this.
Oh, no, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, if we do this, it has to, it has to have your approval, that's, I should have worded that more clearly. We, we need to decide if we're going to go that far, if we should try just visiting with the property owner to get the cars parked in the driveway.
Guy, is there any stipulation on how much to a stop sign we can park?
I didn't look that up, I would have to. Yep. Well, and I'm sure these people aren't thinking about semis rounding that corner. You know, they just aren't, doesn't enter their mind. Harvest is coming. That's why the Coop is so, uh, we're concerned about it because then there's a ton more truck traffic coming in and out of the facility. So, I feel like if I can just get in touch with them, I can get this resolved. But yet I wanted you to make, wanted to make you aware of the situation. So, um, do you want me to go any further than just trying to make contact? Start the process of putting a no parking sign in or not?
Try to make contact, but also I think it is something we should look into because now that I think about, yes, there's a ton of semis maybe we should have a no parking from here to the corner.
Here to the corner, sign. I'll have all the regulations for next meeting. No problem. And centerlines, like me, you're not interested? We could, I don't know. Again, I don't know. It's necessarily, it's easy to paint a stop line, but we don't have stop lines on any intersections except Main and, and First right here downtown, so I can't see adding one there either. Um, so. Okay, I'll work on it.
All right, this is item I, review votes from Banacom for city logo implementation. There is a quote there that's within your packet. You can see that they're itemized there on items that would be needed. This is a follow-up from an earlier, uh, approval for the new city logo and what's required for it. This was put together, I think, by, uh, the clerk and, uh, or the guy in the first. So, um, you have a previous approval of $380 from a motion that was done months before. I think that was for the area where the camera was going. And then a new, uh, cost of $15.88. Uh, do you have anything else you want to say besides what's already placed upon your itemized list?
Uh, just in case, um, you are unsure which, oh, I'm not going to get into it. Um, the city signs, the ones we've talked about, possibly having Lamar put the wrap over, those are included in that too, where I take the Plexiglas off, take it to Banacom. They would strip off the old logo, put the new on, that Plexiglas, and then put it back. Just so there's no confusion on what all the signs are. I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory, but, uh...
Is there new signage? Or there, were a couple of these that don't exist today?
The, no, that's the ones you approved earlier for the brush mark.
No, no. Like, do we have logos on the skid loader?
We had logos on the old skid loader, yes. And, and then the dump truck and the pickup. Um, and then the door, there is, when, no one knew how to get into the shop in the winter if we were in the shop. And so I had, uh, logo put on the door of the shop saying, "Maintenance Shop, Enter Through Second Doors," because people would come in and see that well pump and shut the door again thinking they were in the wrong spot. So, I had many people saying, "I didn't know where to find you," you know, like if they were coming to bring a delivery or, or whatever the case may be. So, um, yeah, none of that is new. The only thing that is new is the, uh, the little, a little sign to put by the doorbell that we installed for ADA access. What, $35?
Ring for assistance or push for assistance.
Yeah, push, ring, doorbell for assistance entering City Hall is what I totally put on, so.
On water payment blocks, it's going to cut off time.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And on the door of City Hall, it's going to have business hours and, and not just the logo, but business hours with a little disclaimer that, you know, um, basically that hours are subject to change. So, that way if we're going to train or whatever, nobody says, "Hey, I came to the door and nobody was there." And it said you should be open, so.
Because we usually post this, yeah.
Right, right.
Phil, if you might say on this council, if somebody does, uh, form up a motion, would you, uh, structure it as such that it gives up the latitude to purchase any additional reasonable costs associated with logo changes? I think sooner or later you might need more stationery, more something, and this, this is the logo for years to come. There's no need to keep coming back to us for a cost that is within your purview of approvals, but...
And the only reason I like a logo on the, on the skid loader is that it's separated. There's a million skid loaders and, and that's the only reason, is so they know it's the city. But no removal on it because there's nothing on it yet.
That's all I was making.
Yeah, yeah.
I have no, I just want to make sure there are no.
Straight.
I make a motion. We approve the quotes for the city logo update. Within, I don't remember which coverage it was.
Oh, and any reasonable cost in the future.
Reasonable cost above this quote to update logos.
Uh, motion by Saracen, second by, any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, the motion carries. All right, very good. Thank you. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to the item J, which is review. Agreement quote from the Len County, uh, from Len County for rock overlay from Old Quos Road. That's also in your, it gives a description and a, uh, cost there. I'll turn that over to public works also for the, uh, review of that.
Secondary roads, uh, department manager for Len County contacted. They're doing what they're calling rock overlays on the gravel roads in this area. Wanted to know if we want to do our section of Old Quos, which has been on my plate to do because the spring killed it and we do need to do something. Um, so after review, we cannot do it cheaper than what they can. For example, they're buying rock nearly a dollar a ton cheaper than, than we can at the quarry and they're getting a favorable haul rate as well. We, I, we can't hire trucks to haul it that cheaply. So, um, there's no better way to, to do it. And I did have, uh, Jeremy Hanley ride with me on the road. His dump trucks do, do a lot of work for the county and other grappling projects. And he agreed on their tonnage, that he felt like that was an adequate, um, not overkill amount of tons to put on that stretch of road. Um, and so, I think it's our best option so that we don't have a double disaster in the spring. If we've got enormous craters to fix because we didn't put rock on it, it's really going to kill us if we got to hire heavy machinery to fix it back up, so.
So, how far does 1,900 feet take us?
It, it's from Main, all the, from Albertina Road all the way to the railroad trackspace.
Correct.
Yep. And, uh, this agreement is per our 2080 with the county. Um, once you, once it becomes a project, so to speak, there has to be a, a project agreement. So, this agreement spells it out and then we sign it, they sign it, and a copy get, we keep a copy, they keep a copy, and a copy gets sent to the state. And that's just how our 2080 with them is. Yeah, just, just this time, yep. And then we'll monitor and, you know, if we have another rough couple of years, we might have to add more down the road.
Not knowing anything that has been done with Quos Road, whatever here has happened?
No, just, just maintenance. We entered the 2080 so they could maintain it with a road grader because we don't have the equipment good enough to, to maintain it. So, besides regular road grading, I don't think we've put a speck of rock on that road, honestly, on our portion of it in several years since I've been here probably.
Really, the majority of the cost here is in materials. So, like you said, we're not going to get it done any cheaper.
No, there's no, I, I searched every option. I can't find a way to do it any more cost effectively than that.
Budget-wise, are we, it's not something we necessarily planned for?
No, we'll more than likely have to do some maneuvering to cover it. Um, and this was again, well after budget time when the, you know, the spring rained and thawed. Yeah.
Okay, so the total cost is $12,096.48. It's, uh, just you indicated that we do have the budget for this. Do we have your recommendation for this, guys?
Yes.
All right, it's not Saracen. There's, uh, no further discussion on this. We had a motion to approve. So, motion by Shon.
Second.
Second. Saracen, any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and continue on to whole business. This is the Naylor Sewer Extension Roosevelt Culver. I think you're going to update us on this too.
Yeah, um, the sewer extension is complete, done. Um, everything's fine. No issues there. It was very straightforward and no issues. Culver is also done. That went very well. Uh, Hanley did her work, came back and, and finished, uh, grading the shoulders and seeded the rest of it the other day after we got the asphalt patch in. Of course, the asphalt patch was the, the problem in this waiting to get Gleiser Construction here to do it. But it's done and it's done at, um, no additional cost except we knew we'd have to go past what the engineer's estimate called for as far as asphalt goes. And that was placed at, at the rate that he did the regular patch for. So, um, in the end, except for having to wait a long time to get it in there, it worked out, um, and it's completed. And the only thing left is grading in the feed farm field. And we're closing in on having an easement sign. It's hard tracking down. There's four owners of that property and getting all the proper names for signatures on the easement is taking a little time. But that, I think, probably will get accomplished next week. And so then once crops out, uh, Hanley will come back and grade the, the field so that the water can get away from the culver. And then it'll be done.
Do you update North Street at the same time?
Oh, North Street, yes. North Street, we're still waiting for rock shoulders from Gleiser. Uh, they are just busy and, and backed up and he will get to us as soon as possible.
I'm out of my drink and right at the end, so we get to the fire station project update. As you know, the agenda handled most of the financing base that we need to complete for that. So, that's a good thing, uh, which brings us up to just the, uh, general update. We've met with, uh, our architects. We continue to now and negotiate with them, but also finalize some of the items for the particular project. And we always try to keep this up here for now too, so the folks can see what we're putting into place for the, uh, fire station. This plan has not changed except for maybe some exterior items that we're still deciding on, but nothing fundamental changed for that. We do have a meeting next week on September 18th, Wednesday, right? Wednesday, September 18th, uh, at 6:30. Uh, that's up at the school. We hope to have good attendance for that. Uh, that, the purpose of that meeting is to give the folks an update, um, not only within the city, within the township and as well as anyone else that wants to attend. It is a public meeting. Um, and although that presentation is not completed yet, still have to get a few measurements here and there and a few more details and things like that in it. Um, I hope to have that done by at least Monday or something like that and then do some run-throughs with it. So, uh, I am happy to hear that there will be folks from the fire station there. I'm sorry to hear about the cheese. So, you would have been an important element in speaking about that, but, um, having the other folks there will be good to answer any questions and deal with anything about it. The feel of that presentation covers not only a history of the fire department and the project, but it also talks about what we're doing as, uh, for financing and in some aspects of what we've worked for fundraising and things like that. So, I don't think that the folks, especially within the corporate city limits, have any confusion at all about the fire department, the members of the fire department, what the fire department does with things like that. So, uh, the aspects that we cover, uh, are generally about the project. The projects, the administrative portion of the things that we're doing, so. But it does cover all bases, so. Uh, it should be, it's a good informational piece and, uh, should bring the folks up to where we need, so. That's the only thing going on for now. We'll get that completed and we should be in good shape after that. Go ahead. This is in the school cafeteria. It worked best, for one, we didn't know the exact size of everyone coming, but it works best with, uh, to be able to put out a few, uh, light refreshments and then, uh, to be able to have, uh, the audiovisual items if we needed to be able to support it, so. Who knows? We could have, you said five? And us, we could have 15 people there. Uh, then again, we could have 200, but, uh, we'll make it work. So. Other questions on the fire station? Very good. Well, that's the end of it. I, uh, sorry, it went long this evening, but we had a lot of items to cover. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, moved by Vincent, second by Saracen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. We are adjourned.